Welcome to the week three of our study session for football. Thanks for everybody for being here. We're glad you're here. This week we're gonna look at more of the our position, the referees. And we're first going to start off with a short video regarding the I thought it was well well done. Regarding the new enforcement for penalties. It'll be in your book. There's a great chart in your book. I'm sure somebody will be inventive and will print out that chart. And if you're that guy in your group, people really appreciate that. So do it. That would I'm sure I appreciate when people do that. So if you're that guy. By all means, please be that guy. I thought Wags was Steve was coming in, but he's I don't see him joining yet. So. Alright, further ado, I'm going to share my screen. Share that one. This one right here. I make it a full screen. And tell me if you're having any issues once I play. Ah, silly ad. Sorry about that. That's how you guys get their money.
Hey, we don't have any sound. Yep, none of us. A bunch of people in the chat room. Yeah, I'm on the inside. I don't know what you're doing.
Brad?
There, I hear it now. Go ahead, talk.
Yeah. We couldn't hear you, Brad.
Can you hear the video?
We can hear you talking, but we don't have sound on the video.
Oh, so. Let me go back here just a second. Let me see what I'm doing wrong.
There you go. I heard that.
Okay. I'll let it play through.
I don't have any sound on my end.
Yeah, I can't hear anything.
Yeah, we're not hearing the video.
I can't hear the video.
Nope.
You can't hear it?
None of us.
No. What am I doing wrong, Steve?
On these videos, I don't remember there ever being audio.
There it is. Is it just delayed?
Can you talk to it, Brad? Try to talk to it.
Are you the stadium announcer? What are you listening for?
No, you're listening for a there's a there's a guy that's reviewing it. So. If it's not gonna work, I'll I'll try it one more time. And if it doesn't work, then we'll just move on.
Just try to narrate it.
I'll I'll share the the beginning. Well.
Knock it off.
Yes.
Hey, Brad, try turning your camera off.
I'll have to share the video with you later on, okay? I I'm in the middle of the class, okay? Alright. Um. Same as system microphone. I'm gonna try it one more time. You hear it now?
Now click on that little speaker.
This one?
Yeah. No sound. Slide that to the right. There you go. Let it go. Yeah. No, not yet.
Alright, so you can't hear. We'll just
Just do your best to narrate it.
Right. So you'll find this chart in the in the book. So behind the line of scrimmage. And it ends behind a leverage its previous spot. So in this play, there was a hole behind the line of scrimmage, and it used to be the spot of the foul. Now it's gonna go back to the line of scrimmage and be enforced from that spot, which is the previous spot.
So what's the bottom line take home message?
On this is that it's not gonna be long. So on this one, it's behind the line of scrimmage, beh- beyond the line of scrimmage, it will be the previous spot.
Now it's all of them.
Well, wait a minute. You're saying beyond the line of scrimmage, if there's a hole, it goes back to the previous spot?
No, that did not change.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's behind the line of scrimmage and it's contact fouls against an opponent are gonna go to previous spot. If it's fouls against the ball, batting, kicking, illegal pass, those are gonna be spot fouls.
Right.
So in this case, the foul happened beyond the lines, behind the line of scrimmage, but that play ended beyond the line of scrimmage. It'll go back to the previous spot, not where the spot of the foul was.
And it and it does not matter where that run ended in that case.
Right. Beyond the line of scrimmage, behind the line of scrimmage.
Brad, you know, us in Colorado, I got to spend two hours with George a couple of weeks ago. And this, whether you want me to bring this up or not, the chart, the chart has a mistake. And and here's the here's the enforcement. This is the play. So if if let's say A carries the ball down the field 20 yards, and they fumble. Now B picks it up and returns it some amount of yardage. It doesn't matter that they hold behind the end of the run. In our old days, we all would have known that's like a dirty hands play, right? We would go back to to be where they held. They would maintain possession because they picked up the fumble and they had clean hands. But George says the the and I can turn my camera on. The book doesn't say that. It says that play would be enforced from the end of the run.
What page is the chart on?
Eighty-four, eighty-three or eighty-four. And and so George, so a week or so ago at the National Federation Summer Meeting, they were supposed to work out some of these rare cases that are that don't conform. They're rare, but they do like that one does happen. And that's a that's not an uncommon play.
No, with the fumble and the hold after the
Yeah, during that during that return. And and so George is George is like he that he was kind of in a quandary and they were supposed to work it out. Well, he was supposed to get us information by now. We haven't heard. But I would be shocked. He had a couple of like little exception language and it what they did is that he said how this chart came about is they tried to remove every exception. And in trying to do that versus college, which has one hundred and forty-nine, he said they made mistakes.
Well, and and they made mistakes about, I mean, it just happens.
It is. And they're they're not going to admit it. It's a change because of the offensive hold and all the other fouls, like you said, are still the same. It's just that rare case is like that one. And there's others, but that one's problematic. And I think most of us would would do it right, not by the book. We would, we would go from the spot of the foul, but not because that's what the book says. And an astute coach may want to catch us. That's all.
I'm still not finding that chart. You're talking about the twenty twenty-three reading?
No, it's it's in the rulebook. It's in ten four.
It's in the rulebook. Yeah, we haven't gotten our rulebooks. We haven't get our rulebooks sent out to us until
It's on page. We just got them, so don't feel badly, but it's page eighty. When you get it, you'll be surprised. Eighty-three, and it's all on one page.
Page eighty-three?
Of the new rulebook.
Okay, a new rulebook.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah.
Brad, this is Bill. I just barely
Alright, thanks, Bill.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Alright, so we'll keep moving forward here. So foul by A beyond the line of scrimmage and the play ends beyond the line of scrimmage, the foul behind the end of the run or related run spot of the foul. And then the foul by A beyond the line of scrimmage and the play ends beyond line scrimmage, the foul advance of the runner or related runs exceeding spot. So we'll watch it.
Hey, Brad, can you go full screen on that?
On
On the video on your screen. Yeah, that little thing on the right. Oh, it's already full screen?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Is it showing full screen?
Uh, no, I got you and your your camera and that screen split.
I'm seeing it full screen.
Yeah, Steve, that's on your site setting.
Just operator error?
Operator error.
Drag on the right side of the video.
Okay, I see it. Got it. Very nice. Thank you.
Showing a foul. So he's basically saying in in this instance, anything that is one behind, it's the previous spot. This is the back to the all but one old all but one. Anything that's beyond the line of scrimmage, you go to the spot that's closest to the line of scrimmage. So in this case, the foul happened beyond further beyond the line of scrimmage, but the play ended closer to the line of scrimmage, you got a line of scrimmage. The spot of the foul or the spot of enforcement would be at the end of the run or what at this point where the exceeding spot.
Yeah, what they tried to do was eliminate the all but one. That's what they were. That's what the editors were trying to do. And George said, it's not that simple.
And these are fouls by B. So it's basically saying that this the the fouls from B are basically the same as they've always been. No, that's This one is a back to the yeah, right. So that one, instead of the whole, the face mask at the at the spot of the foul, it would be enforced from the previous spot. Yeah, defense are not gonna like this, to be honest with you, the defensive coach.
Yeah, they don't get rewarded for fouling in the backfield. So.
Well, I'm gonna move on because you guys can't hear this video and it's you basically got the rundown and we're gonna I'll let Carl have the um I'm gonna exit my shared screen. Um, just so know that there's a um a change. The video that I got is is a really good video. I'll share it out. It's from EF OA High School Football on YouTube. Um, you can you can go to it right now. It's gonna be in our rulebooks. It's something that we're gonna have to probably go over two or three times to get the gist of it. Um, just like we've, I mean, some of us continue to have problems with the all but one principle. So um, and Steve had a great thing. So Steve's working on for our guys work on this new one. But if you want to get ahead of the game, and if you want a good video to be able to share out to everybody, that's a really good video. I'll I'll try to share it out to everybody in this in this session. Um, we're gonna
Share I'll share those charts with anybody wants them. And if anybody wants to help improve them, that's fine, too.
We're uh, we're gonna move on from here and go into the the video portion of our night with Carl, and we're gonna look at this from the the white hats. Um, view, where did Carl go? And
I'm here.
There you go. You got the con, Carl.
So let's see, share screen. Alright, so let's Alright, so we're gonna go up to the plays here. Lobos. Forty-six. There we go. Alright. Alright, so basically, there was a great suggestion. I don't recall. It might have been Steve, but let's think about initial keys and then transitioning as the play develops. So we have and and these could be calls that could be made by umpires, by wings, some of these and a lot of these calls are made by the white hat. So something to think about. What's the white hat looking at? So we've got some engagement right here, right at the line of scrimmage. Okay.
Looks like the white hat threw the flag on that. Um, I I was telling Carl that white hats are a lot of times are looking at the quarterback. Um, but they can often catch that tackle, especially if it's sprinting out. It's the same side tackle.
So They white handed turn around and be looking at the left garden, being seen the left garden, left tackle on a right-handed quarterback. Right. Won't necessarily see the right guard, right tackle.
Okay, so this one, this is on a free kick. So the white hat is back with the receiver. So did we catch that?
Let me go back to the file, Carl.
Okay. I'm going back to now. Let's see. I'm going forward. Here we go. Alright, here we go. We'll stop it at the foul. So let's what do we what do we have here?
Looked like a clip.
Well, it's it's it it happens right here.
So this is a starburst play. This is a starburst play. And 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 is this an illegal forward handoff?
Forward handing. We had a team do it. Durango did it a couple of times up here.
And usually that's the guy that's right there. Then like that thirty-two is usually turn around and he'll hand off to three of the other players. But in this case, the one player handed it forward to the thirty-two.
Yeah, we were fifty fifty. We missed one and then another game we caught one off this play. So it it happened in a hurry and it's hard to catch.
These these things happen in a hurry and a lot of the wacky stuff happens on free kicks and scrimmage kicks, doesn't it?
So what's the enforcement on this?
Bot foul.
Bot foul.
So
So looking up the illegal hand handling or forward hand, um, the the books doesn't talk about it on on free kicks. It talks about it more of on a you know, scrimmage play. And anytime you can handle the ball forward or backwards, as long as it's behind the line of scrimmage, but in this case, you're running forward, you you can always hand the ball backwards, but you can't hand the ball forward. An illegal forward handoff uh, in a scrimmage play would be a loss of down. In this, I think it's just the the spot foul flag right there and then five yards from that from that play. So
Right, there is no loss of down on that.
But there is no loss of down on it. Right.
Right.
So
And the and and the white hat got this one. So white hat was all over.
Awesome. And the uh, the the motion is the hand behind the back waving up and down um, for the illegal handling of the ball. The same is for an illegal pass, which we're gonna cover next.
So for that team to do that legally, they they they're gonna do that starburst, that first initial handoff to that center guy, he has to be in front of him and kind of are laterally
Be behind him. Yeah.
Normally, the receiver will turn around and face his own goal line and then make the handoff. That's the way they normally do it.
Gotcha. The guy up front will have the ball first and they come to him.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
And and usually the coach will tell you that's your pre, you know, the pre meeting. He'll tell you, hey, we run a starburst and and maybe this is a good time to explain to the coach that all those handoffs have to be to the back, to the rear. They can't be handling it forward. So and they'll say, yeah, yeah, we know. And then you get something like this and you know, well, coach, you handed it forward.
And one thing to watch out for also is that when he's coming around, making sure that he actually goes behind the person, the receiver that has the ball rather than in front of it. Because I've had that happen where they turn around and they're doing that end around, but instead of going behind the runner, he turns around and he goes in front of him and it essentially it's a forward handoff.
Alright, so we talked about this play and tell me what you would do during this play. Go back, Carl. There you go. Go ahead and freeze it when it when it happens.
Okay, so
Quarterback gets the ball.
Something was muffed. Do we have? There's the ball right there.
Do we have a live ball or do we have a dead ball?
Was that a did he toss it?
Well, look, take a look. So
My my screen's small, so I can't see too well.
The ball's right here. Alright, here's the ball right there.
It's like a forward pass right there. Yeah. Kind of batted it forward. You're incomplete pass. Exactly, incomplete pass.
So the wings can certainly help the the white hat on this one, right? So we're still on our initial keys. We're holding the line, the actions at the line, some type of a running play.
This also would be, if you look at the white hat, he seems to be hugging closer to the the um lines, the hash marks. If you move yourself out a little bit further towards the center of the field and and give yourself a little bit more room to get that better angle, you can watch your quarterback easier with that. You can certainly spot that.
And and the notes, the notes that I got the notes that I got from Matthew on this is based on what what happened. They missed this one as an incomplete pass. He adjusted where he was on the field. He made an adjustment. So that's good. Alright. Okay, so the next couple are basically are do we have illegal forward pass? And who can help? Who can help the referee with these ones?
Wings.
Wings. There you go. So he was beyond the line of scrimmage. And we talked about so let's we were gonna talk about this and and both of these are basically the same the same um play. This uh, he throws beyond the line of scrimmage, but should we as wings, should we be holding the line of scrimmage until the ball is released? Are we releasing downfield? What what's the what's the philosophy here? What's the mechanic? Wings.
You gotta kind of read the play.
I don't know what the new mechanic
Um, guys.
Yeah.
Uh, Brad or
Brad, Bill.
Carl?
Yeah.
For me, I would probably hold the line of scrimmage. That will give me an idea that I won't lose my position. Is that the correct mechanics to hold on to? I know where the, you know, the the play happened, but I would keep my line.
It depends on if you're supposed to be going down with your receiver or not.
Okay.
Now, doesn't the new mechanic
You read it, make sure that it is gonna be a pass and then you gotta go. Because you get way behind these guys and you can't see the passer or ferrets or holding or running that kind of stuff. So you gotta be able
Point.
Be down there and close enough that you can see that.
What what does the new mechanic say we're supposed to do?
I was gonna say, doesn't the new mechanic call for one, one of the wings to hold? And the other wing to go down? I'm not sure. So I, you know, don't take that as a
Yeah, it's it's the guy and like the headlines been on this particular picture that we're looking at right now. He should be going down with this guy and the the line judge on the other side should be holding back and waiting a little bit.
Good. Now, good point, you guys. Good point.
Strong side?
Yeah, strong side goes down with his
So the strong side wing is the one who goes down and the weak side wing holds. And if it So the strong side wing is the one who goes down and the weak side wing holds. And if it's split balanced?
No, that's backwards.
Backwards.
Go ahead, Dave. Let Dave speak.
So the whole point of, of why the strong side stays is because the back judge is helping on the strong side. So that wing can afford to stay a little longer cause he has help. The other wing has no help because the back judge can only look at one side of the field. So he has to go down. So strong side wing holds because they have help with the receivers downfield.
And if it's a balanced formation, what do they do?
So balanced formation, which uh, where's the back judge going? We should know this. Line judge side in balanced formations always goes to the line judge side. So this was part of our conversation. At the end of last year.
Yes.
The wings need to know.
I believe so.
Oh.
On this particular play, the, the one before was really close. It was close whether it was illegal forward pass. You know, if it's, it's, it's right there. This one's obvious. And what you may notice, check out both wings where they are when this happens. Okay. See where the wings are? Are they gonna be able to judge unless they, unless they have a good mem, you know, memorize, okay, what, where was the line of scrimmage? Alright, it's on the forty-two. Okay, so should both these wings be this far downfield at this point?
No.
No.
What, and Brad and I talked about this a little bit. So Brad says, well, you know, you don't wanna get caught, right? You don't wanna get caught with a receiver downfield. So I'm thinking, if it was me about, you know, what's your initial key? What's your transition key? Transition key maybe in this situation is, is he gonna throw it against the grain over to the head linesman's side? Probably not. He's, he's beelining it this way and he's a lefty. Okay, so I'm thinking maybe, maybe in this guy, maybe the H holds a little bit longer, holds the line. And besides, the H could also help with cleanup.
Our back judges are gonna.
Good point, good point, you guys.
Our back judges are going to pregame. They have a pregame. We always allow our back judges to, to talk about timing and, and to talk about this. It's, this is an important thing to pregame to get clear who's gonna hold on and how we're gonna signal on these formations and who, who need, who needs to stay back and help. Because this is gonna be a clear illegal forward pass. So go ahead.
Brad, I think you brought up a very good point there in the fact that I don't believe that there is a mechanic for it. But if we can come up with a way where the back judge and the wings communicate with each other so that they know which one is, which one's staying and which one's moving.
This is also a good example of knowing where our line of scrimmage is and knowing where we are on the field because this guy is two to three yards beyond the line of scrimmage while he's making a throw. So this is a clear illegal forward pass.
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure if it was flagged. I think Steve, Steve uh gave me this clip, so he might remember, but.
Carl, Carl, can you back up to the big snap? They cut it, they cut it off pretty quickly after the film. But I thought we got this and I don't know. The other one was really close. I don't think we threw on.
Yeah, the other one was really close, but this one's obvious.
Yeah.
Will you go back to the snap, please, to the initial lineup?
Yeah, let me see if I can.
Yeah, drag you and just drag it. It's the.
Yeah.
You gotta drag the green one all the way back to the beginning. There you go.
Okay. You ready?
Keep going. I go a little farther. Yeah. Okay, so we have a balanced formation, right? So back judge, we're gonna be on the headline, line judge side. Okay, this is where I, I slightly disagree um with our mechanics changes that they put the, the back judges to back to the outside receiver. Okay, but if we follow what our new mechanic is, back judge has that receiver farthest outside. H has the one, the interior correct. Okay, if we play this out, the, the more important thing is if the H is patient, go ahead and, and play the pay, uh, play the video.
Okay, hold on a second. I thought you said the line judge, the back judge had the line judge side.
I'm sorry, line judge side. Yeah. You're correct. Sorry. Uh, they both did it wrong. But what I wanna point out here is number one, the H is not even looking at his receivers. Um, so what good does it do to move downfield if you're not even looking at them?
Yeah.
Number two, if we were uh favoring the H's side in this particular play and the same situation applies to the L, we can look at that one next. Does it do the H any good to be five yards away from that receiver that's right there?
No.
No. So if he would have kept his initial spot, he would have actually been in better position to officiate the, the receiver because he would have had more distance between him and that receiver, especially because they're coming back. Now, if you back it up and we look at the line judge side, okay, the same thing happens. Okay, boat, on both sides of the formation, the um, there's the outside guy uh. Okay, go ahead and play that. So we got the back judges on the outside receiver closest to the sideline. Okay, who does the cutting in? Or out in this situation, cutting out?
Both outside receivers.
Both outside receivers, right? So this is a switch situation where the back judge and the wing need to be aware in this situation that L should have transitioned to the outside receiver because they stayed closer. And the back judge is gonna transition to the inside receiver once the play starts to develop because they're going deep or deeper. Okay, so again, if the L would have stayed on the line of scrimmage, he could have officiated that receiver that's right there by the sideline just as easy, if not better um from that position. He gains nothing by moving the couple of yards downfield.
And, and he's in a better and safer position to trail the play when he takes off.
Correct. So distance is our friend. Uh, and you can see a lot more because you get too close, then you can only see one thing. Right? So if the L would have stayed, he would have been all over that uh, that play and there was no need for him to move downfield regardless if that was, he was, had no help or not. Cause that receiver didn't go down very far.
And, and I think what you're saying, David, is the back judge could help you if he does toss it to him, right?
Right. So if I'm reading this play as a back judge, right, um, and let's say that I was on the H's side, but then I need to transition to the L side. On both plays, because of the way those inside receivers run the route, I'm gonna move to the inside. When I move to the inside receiver, my vision is gonna take me to where I can see the backfield. This is why I don't like how we switched it. I prefer going on inside because it helps back judges read the quarterback. Uh, cause they can open their vision more to be able to help both sides. But in this case, this is the way I would do it. Once they broke and I saw that the inside receiver was going deep, I would have transitioned because they're not pressed. There's no threat for foul. I would have seen that the quarterback is scrambling to the line judge's side and I would have moved over there to help the line judge with my eyes, not physically, but moved my field of vision over to help the line judge. And I would have been able to help take that deep receiver and that line judge would be able to take the short one and stay exactly where they're at and not have to move and they would have been able to help.
And, and if you stay where you're at, you can move your head back and forth. So you can see both things going on. You can see the QB.
Correct.
Receiver and then you can kinda read the guts of what the receiver's gonna, I mean, the QB's gonna do. Is he gonna take off? Or is he gonna pass? You know, you kinda get a feel for it.
Yeah, this play is hard for wings.
Yeah.
Um, you know, do you go in the backfield or do you stay where you're at? Do you back up into the, the player and coach's area to get more space? Um, you know, so i- it's a hard play for the wings, but if they follow, if we follow the new mechanic on the wings, then uh, see that line judge would have never been down that far, no matter what, to be able to help that deep receiver.
And friends, we, we haven't mentioned, but that umpire needs to step up a little too.
Yes, that's, that's exactly.
That the umpire could help too. And there's, there's with some, with some moving with a purpose with three officials could have all seen this play.
That's what I was.
We did get, I believe we did get this play. Um, I made note, I record all the fouls in my games and we got it. So there was, I, I had clear view from where I was at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
An illegal forward pass is signal thirty-five, which is the hand behind the back. And a loss of down, which is signal nine, which is the hands behind the head. So we had uh illegal forward pass and loss of down.
So here, just pay attention to where the uh.
Carl had a quick question though. Is that, now we, we had the back judge. So like, are, are those wings kind of in concert like that too in a, a four man crew? Um, cause I know that the back judge has those responses we're picking up, but one needs to, essentially is the same. One needs to stay, one needs to hang, one can ball up the field.
I think a lot. Yeah, I think a lot of it has to do with where they, where you think the strong side will end up. Where's the pressure gonna be? Where's the, where's the matchups gonna be? Where's the quarterback?
In a four man crew, you don't have help. So there is no assistance. You have to go when you have to go.
You go when you have to.
Doesn't have to be right away. You can let him pass you and trail.
You wanna, you wanna be patient. You, you don't wanna take off right away. Cause you, you know, even if you're running downfield, you're not doing any good with your eyes bouncing up and down either. You need to stop and pay attention at some point, looking for DPI, OPI.
So it's a, it's a float, right? I mean, ta- help me out, wings. You sort of float down. If you see a pass is happening and you know that they've been pass centric. And so you're starting to, you see it, your receivers are gone down and cleared out. And, and you're watching the play develop, but you're gonna start floating down a little bit. And then as the, you see the pass happening, you're gonna maybe move with the purpose to the point where the ball's in the air and you, you know that those are when fouls can occur, right? Now the ball's in the air and then we're gonna stop and, and officiate the play. Um, if, so we're not bouncing up and down and, and then try to get to the spot as best we can. Having four man mechanics is just, it's difficult. It, it really is, but it's a lot, it's what we deal with a lot here.
Oh, hey, pay attention. Here's where the line of scrimmage is. And this was a, this was a rule change two years ago. So what do we have there?
He didn't go outside the tackle box is your hint.
Grounding, I can't see.
Intentional grounding is correct. He's not outside the tackle box. He went straight back, right? And he didn't get to the line of scrimmage with his throw.
So. And there's one other piece. What's the other piece? Uh, that open question to everybody. What's the other component?
Well, nobody there.
Nobody there.
Receiver in the area.
Eligible.
Eligible.
Eligible receiver.
So one of the questions was, in the notes I saw, is number seven close enough to qualify? I'd say, I'd say he was in, the quarterback is desperate here. I don't know. This is questionable in my mind.
Where did the ball land?
Where this guy.
Around the thirty.
The guy where the guy on the ground is.
Nah, I, I, I would have called intentional grounding.
There's the ball right there in the air.
Yeah.
Hit, strikes the ground. So here's the closest receiver and he's probably, you know, we got some distortion here, but that's probably a good seven yards. So anyway.
What's the threshold? Does the defense, the defense contact, um, I don't think it did in this case because he released before he got hit, I believe. But if the defender was making contact as he was throwing in the ball, you know, just didn't travel far enough, is, is that a consideration as well?
Yes.
For me it is. Uh, but.
Should be for everybody.
Is what is the quarterback? And this is where you use the judgment in there. What is the quarterback trying to do? Is he trying to get it to a receiver or is he just trying to get rid of it? That's one of the ones that, and if he's hit, well, he's throwing it and it, and the hit causes the ball to deflect or whatever, go some other way and like that, then I gotta, I gotta an incomplete pass. However, if it doesn't, if he's trying to get rid of it, then I got intentional rounding.
He's trying to get rid of it. He got pushed. While he was getting pushed, the ball went a little bit wonky.
But it, I think, doesn't it say in the rulebook about uh trying to conserve yardage or?
Time.
Time.
Seven, five, two, an illegal, um, it is legal for a player to conserve yardage by intentionally throwing an incomplete forward pass if the passer has been beyond the lateral boundary of her free blocking zone as established at the snap. And the pass reaches the neutral zone, including the extension beyond the sideline.
Okay, alright, so.
It's an illegal forward pass, the foul, illegal forward pa- pass after the team possesses has changed during your down. A pass beyond the, the neutral zone, a second or subsequent forward pass thrown during a down. And a pass intentionally thrown into an area not occupied by eligible offensive receiver or thrown incomplete to save loss of yards or to conserve time.
And what were the notes on that play?
The exceptions were, um, oh, on that play, oh, they were questioning whether that, um, that number seven.
Number seven was an eligible, was.
Eligible receiver in the area.
Or was the quarterback pushed to cause him to throw an inerrant pass?
Or hit the ball.
So I'm gonna be devil's advocate here for a second. Let's say that, that play, the quarterback wasn't as deep and you got a receiver within seven yards. Does that change your thoughts on that play at all?
If, if he's trying to get the pass to that, to that player that's in the backfield, I think that we would have called it in, incomplete pass, right?
Well, that's, that's, that's what I think. We're not officiating intent. We have to make a, make our decision based on what we see on the field. We don't officiate intent.
Well, but the book does say if the turnaround and the quarterback is trying to conserve yardage or time and you have to use the judgment on that. Which is, as you say, intent, but you have to use the judgment on it.
I think it was clear that he was trying to conserve yardage in, in throwing that, that pass instead of taking the sack.
I, and uh, you know, there's three, there's clearly three defenders between the rece- the so-called receiver and where the ball landed. So he's not gonna throw them at those three receive, those three defensive players.
I think we have, um, I think we have enough to be able to call uh an intentional grounding, which is uh, which is signal thirty-six. Remember we're white hat centric tonight. So signal thirty-six is that intentional ground and it also comes with a loss of down, which is that signal nine.
So it's a pretty secure.
Wrong. No, in this case it would be a previous spot. Five yards from the previous spot.
No.
Oh, right.
Oh, it's a spot foul.
It's a spot foul and in high school, it's a five yard loss from that. Five yards from there.
Yep, five yards.
That's a heavy duty.
With the news, with the new rules?
No, remember what I said, fouls against, it's the ball or spot foul still. Illegal forward pass, batting, uh, kicking, fouls against the ball are still spot fouls.
Okay.
Fouls, contact fouls are the ones that are new that are gonna go previous spot, holding, fading.
Well, that's a good. That's a good.
And the mechanic, the mechanic that I use for that is my wing turns around, comes up and lets you know there was nobody in the area. Generally speaking, I'm watching the QB as he's being pressured. So I don't know. So I need my wing to come up, let me know there was nobody in the area. Then I drop a flag and we enforce it from there.
So, okay, so on this next one is uh, is, are the officials in the best position to make the call? Stop it and go slow. Stop it and go slow. Back it up.
Hard to see that block, Paul.
So it's this guy right here. So here's the blocker. Takes him out at the knees. Is that what it looks like? Low block.
What it looks like.
Double team.
So the white hat got that one. So again, I think, uh, wings could probably certainly help. If the white hat was somehow blocked and couldn't see it. These are hard on the interior for the wings. These are hard calls sometimes. Uh, he comes in and certainly that tackle goes low. And that's, that's not in the pre, it's, it's not immediate, da-da-da, doesn't meet all the criteria for illegal low block. So. So white hat had a really good look at it and flagged it. Okay. You know, and that brought a big play back, back.
So this year that's gonna be from previous spot.
That's a good point. Yeah. If you see stuff like that, bring it up for sure. So with the new enforcement. Okay. So we have a. Let's see what.
That's a unique signal also that signal forty, which is, uh, chopping at your knees.
So.
Legal below, block below the waist.
And all the clips that I had and that everybody provided me and the stuff that I, that I searched, I had no, I couldn't find any roughing the passer one. So sorry about that. Don't have any. If we have time, I've got some NFL ones to look at, but. Um, this one I asked Brad, the call was made, you're gonna see a, and the initial foul called, the white hat got it. And then is there something extracurricular that maybe could have been called? Okay. So watch that guy's coming in where he's all, he's got all the the makings of a boom. We have a blindside block there maybe? Yep. Okay. So that gets flagged. Now watch over here. There's the quarterback. Is that a big hit? Is that a big nothing burger?
Hard to tell because the video was a little choppy.
Yeah, it's choppy as hell.
Yeah. As far as timing goes, I think the timing was okay. Helmet or something like that. I don't know.
Yeah, the ball's been released. Here comes the defender, dri- dips his he- helmet a little bit. But.
Yeah, it was like, it was like less than a step away. It was, yeah.
Do you guys, Brad, Brad asked, Brad said the same thing, a step, and he says it's kind of up to each white hat. Do you have your own criteria before you?
We all sort of have a, 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 a criteria that we sort of agree on. I think, I think the one that I've talked to people about was two steps. If he takes two steps and then initiates a hit, then I probably got rough in the passer. If he had an opportunity to, to stop before he hit. If he, if it's within one and he takes one and he hits, then I, it's part of the play.
Okay. I add one thing to that, and that's if he follows through. Follows through with the hit. In other words, drives through or extends the arms out, pushing him down or something of that nature. Now he turned around and he'd like the two steps and there's contact, but he's not following through with it. Then even if the, even if quarterback goes down, then I really don't have a, a, a roughing on that. Okay?
Or, or, or what's the other class of, pick him up and.
I turn around, I usually.
David Langley, what do you got?
So I'd like to go back to the, to the referee's mechanic. Cause nobody's watching the quarterback at all on this play. And it's because of a mechanic breakdown, um, by the referee. So the, in my opinion, based on what I've been going to, the referee starts moving too early. So he's like right in line with the quarterback at this point, instead of letting the quarterback get out in front of him and he trails the play. If he would have done that, he wouldn't have had to turn back to see this blindside block. The blindside block would have been in front of him. He could have flagged it and continued to officiate. And help with the contact on the quarterback. But because he's looking backwards, now he's shut himself off one hundred percent to the action. Uh, that happened on the quarterback. And of course, since the pass is on this side of the field, the wing's not helping either. The wing's looking downfield where the ball's going. So nobody has the quarterback at all.
So. That's a great point. And again, and you opened a door there. So I know as a wing, I've been pretty much trained, uh, don't. Do we help out with roughing the passer? I don't think, I haven't heard that that's a good idea. So I don't know.
Well, yeah. So now he's becoming closer, closer to you, but you're still not gonna look there.
No.
Right? Cause as soon as he starts releasing that ball, your vision is gonna be going towards your receiver, right? Cause the referee has the quarterback.
Exactly. So you got a good point. He's throwing the flag. He's probably not looking over here at this matchup that's about to happen. This collision, there was a little dip to the helmet. It's not a very good, it's not good quality on my end either. Uh, and it's probably a lot slower and chopier on your end, but he, he looks like he dips his helmet and that would be hard to catch unless the QB was right on it, right?
Quarterback will release that, the, the referee will release the quarterback after he crosses the line of scrimmage, correct?
But until. He's a runner at that point.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is he stays with him until minimum, he crosses the line of scrimmage, right?
Yep. Okay. So this is, um.
So the, it's a personal foul, blindside. So th- thirty-eight and then twenty-six is the blindside. Um, block signal.
And what's the new enforcement on that?
Depends on where it happens.
It was behind the line.
That play was behind the line.
Then it's, it's a previous spot.
Previous spot. Okay.
And it was a pass play. So.
Would have been previous spot either way that.
Yep. Okay. So this is a scrimmage kick. This is the white hats world in the backfield. He's charging in. So do you have enough there to make a call? Could you see it?
I, I couldn't see it.
Okay. So there's the kicker's foot in the air. Do you see it contacting the defensive player?
Is he contacting the foot?
Yeah, it looks like it and it, and he takes him out. I mean.
Nah, didn't the planty test his foot?
Oh, he, he craned him. Oh, he got him.
So that could have been, if it's, if he hits the kicking foot, it's more likely running into the kicker.
Right.
If he hits the plant leg, it's roughing.
Yes.
Probably just running into the kicker on this one.
Uh, I'm not, I mean, turn around and look where the, uh, as he turned, yeah. I'd have to see it live.
Well, the guy, the guideline is if he hits the plant leg, it's roughing. If he hits the, the kicking leg, it's generally running into.
Right. He hit both because you turned and bowled into him.
It's judgment. It's judgment.
Yeah.
It is judgment.
Great. Is the, is the white hat in the right spot?
No, he should be taking a step up.
Uh, after the snap?
I think it's possible he could have been a little bit further out.
To remain motionless, to stay still on these things.
Maybe just a little wider.
Just a little bit wider.
But he.
Give him a better angle.
As far as depth goes, it's the right depth.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, that's not good.
Five to seven yards. Yeah.
Behind the kicker.
Behind the kicker. Yeah. I think this, this guy turned and ran into the foot and the.
And the body.
In the body.
And he's in the air. The kicker's in the air. That's a factor. In judging. He, he does not, when you're in the air and you get hit hard, you cannot return to the ground gracefully.
Yeah, you're a, you're a, are you a defenseless player basically?
I think, I think this is roughing because the contact is hard and the kid's in the air. That's all.
But it's a, it's a. It's an important distinction because with roughing, it's a personal foul, roughing the kicker, and it's automatic first down. It comes with an automatic first down.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna, just gonna leave that to you, White Hat, Sam.
Um, if it's just running into the kicker, it's a, it's a five yard penalty. It doesn't come with a first down. So would it affected, would, would they, if it was, you know, fourth and four, then they probably, they would have gotten a fourth down or first down from the penalty on a running into the kicker. But if it was fourth and fifteen, they would have, they get the yardage and they get the first down regardless. So, um, it, it is, it's an important distinction of whether we have roughing or running into, on what, where we go from. So it's a personal foul, the kicking motion, and then the first down, um. Signal.
This is a, this is a, this is a funky one here. Alright. So he does like a dribble kick. You can see the ball right there. Everybody seeing my arrow?
Hmm.
Yes.
Alright, and he decides, you know what? I didn't kick it very well. So let me do it again. So that ball goes down. Everybody's going, hey, wait, that, that's weird. We don't see that every day. So the main question here is what's the proper enforcement for that?
First touching. Illegal kick.
It's a spot foul for the foul. It's just like the others. It's a foul against the ball.
So it's a, it's an illegal kick, spot foul. And so.
They let the play run, which was good. And then depending on the return, it looks like they're gonna take the penalty, but it's close.
It was, it was very close. I, I actually was on this game. It was real close.
Be ten yards from there, right?
I've.
Five, yeah, no, I. Illegal kicking is ten.
Oh, that's right.
Illegal kicking or batting the ball is ten.
Changed that about three years ago.
Yep, sorry.
Player shall intentionally kick the ball other than as a free kick or scrimmage kick. So it's, it's rule number nine, seven, article one. An illegal kick. And then it's, uh, signal thirty-one. Which is the kicking motion. I believe, right? Let me make sure. Oh no, I'm sorry. Uh, it's the touch of the shoulder is an illegal batting or kicking is, is the touch of the shoulder, um, signal. So that's an illegal batting or kicking. Um, and so it's rule number nine, seven that I read to you. So it is a ten yard penalty. From the spot of the foul in this situation.
Okay, we're down to the last few here. So there wasn't, this, this clip, uh, they didn't get enough to know what exactly happened, but you can see a flag's already on the field, right? Okay, there's a flag. So something's been flagged. Something's been flagged and. And it's a live ball foul. It's a live ball. So this one's an enforcement uh, question for the, for the white hats. Alright, so watch what the umpire does. So there's a flag already on the field. No, he doesn't like some kind of monkey business going on. He says, huh, I'm gonna throw another flag. Right? His hat. So what kind of foul is that? Not, we don't care what, I mean, it's probably unsportsmanlike, but what is it live or dead? I guess it's.
Dead ball. I hope it's dead because the officials are walking around.
They're walking around. It's not.
Ball's on the ground.
The ball's on the ground. So watch, we'll just watch this play through. He's saying, hey, I didn't like what Johnny did, said there. He called me a no good so-and-so.
Wow. How great is it that they left the camera on this? Normally after the play's over, they're off.
That's the one disappointment I have with huddle is it's rare that you can actually see what happened, uh.
Well, it's not Huddle's fault.
Unfortunately, that's true.
That's why you might want to invest in, uh, federation if they can get everybody deep and then.
These guys, these guys. These guys are talking about it. Talking about it. And here, he's gonna come make his, uh, final, uh, ruling. So. We got holding.
On the offense.
Personal foul, defense offsetting.
What? No.
Oh, oh boy.
That's live ball, dead ball.
Yeah.
Enforce both of those beats.
So to, to the fifteen, to the seven and a half, we'd almost be right back where we started.
So what is the ramification? So for proper enforcement, what, what should it have been?
A ten yard penalty against the offense brings it back to about the fifteen yard line. If, if that's the previous spot.
Correct.
Okay. I'm presuming where the flag is, is the previous spot.
Yeah, I agree.
So we walk from the previous spot and you bring it back ten yards and then have the distance to go for the personal foul.
Yep.
So you're gonna be at the seven and a half, seven and a half.
And replay the down.
Yes.
And that's, that's a good one for us white hats to remember. And it's something that we can pregame. Uh, i- i- if we're, if we want to, if part of our pregame is if we have a, a live ball, dead ball foul, they both get enforced. And if it's a live ball on the offense and dead ball on the defense, we enforce it. We walk off the, the offensive foul first, then we walk off the defensive foul. And then if it's a first down or what have you, then, then, um, we, at that point, we mark in, and move the chains and, and get moving on that. But we, we wanna mark them off in succession. And that way, if it's a, if a live ball, dead ball foul on the offense, we would do the ten yards and then the fifteen yards. Um, and we would wanna make sure that when we're, we're giving the explanation with our signals that we're making sure that we do um, the first, the live ball and then the dead ball. And we, and we start off with that at, at the junction, giving that dead ball signal and moving forward.
Depending, and depending on what the, the down situation was here, that has a huge, could have a huge impact, right? On enforcement.
Sure.
Okay. So this next.
Whether or not they accept the penalty.
Right. And when they still have an option.
That could have been fourth down and the defense just declines the penalty and accepts the down instead.
So on this one.
If they still get the penalty, then there would still be enforcement. So, right? You guys, so they still have to take that dead ball penalty.
Right, yeah.
Still would be enforcement.
Yeah, let's not forget that.
Take the dead ball, would take the dead ball penalty.
Right. But if that was declined, if that offensive foul was declined for some reason, then the, then they're buying, the defense maybe is buying that dead ball foul.
Right.
Right.
So the, if it was a turnover on downs, then the dead ball, they would have, the defensive team would have had the ball like at the two and a half yard line?
Right.
Okay.
You'll have to distance.
Yep.
And that, yeah.
That happens. That's.
That happens.
Well, I had that play.
It happens. And I've had him turn around and had coaches take the penalty.
Well, they do.
So on this one, um, I don't wanna get caught up in the actual fouls or non-fouls. We're gonna cover this, this play could eat up a whole hour next week. This is, this is a funky play. What I wanna, what I want, Brad and I wanted to bring out was, did the white, should the white hat be more engaged when there's something heavy going on on the field? After the play's over. So we're not gonna, next week, we'll dissect this play of, of all the things that happened and didn't happen and should have happened and could have, would have, should have and all that. But for the purposes of this, let's just let this run. Okay. There's all kinds of. There's the flag there. That guy's hurt. Don't, it doesn't, we'll cover this next week for our special. That guy's hurt, don't, it doesn't, we'll cover this next week for our special teams. Was this a flag or not? So. But the coach comes on the field and temperatures get raised. Get some interaction here. What do you think about the white hat? Well, how engaged in a situation like that should a white hat get with this situation with the coaches involved and whatnot?
Well, before you even get into that, Carl, the three officials were in the I formation during a large part of that play, just, if you go back a little ways. You see three officials lined up in a straight line, not, you, you, you wanna box the play in, right, and so watch this develop. Let it go. Okay, keep going, keep going. Now see the back judge is coming up, the umpire's moving in, and pretty soon, they're gonna be in the I formation. Let it go. Little bit further. Right here. Right there, see that?
Straight line?
Well, it's just that we don't have a box around the action here, we have three guys, you know.
I think what you're gonna see next week, when I show the sideline view coupled with this view. What was called, I, in my opinion, is questionable what was called and what should have been called wasn't called. Okay, and even though there's a player hurt, is it a, you, we have to ask, we'll have to, we'll watch that next week, and is, is it a foul or not a foul? Just because he's hurt doesn't mean it's a foul, right, not necessarily. Players get hurt all the time.
Well, you had the referee start really wide on that play and then move over, and now he's gotta be back, you know, it, there was. I feel like the initial position should have been a little different.
Does anybody know if there was something going on, some reason that the referee, when this play started, was all the way on the hash mark? I, I mean, was there a, a reason for that, was?
I don't think so.
I don't know why I would have been, or any referee would have been that far away from the play.
Ball was on position five, he was on position one, right, I mean.
The, the mechanic says to get wider, right, when the goal line behind us is threatened, but that's pretty wide.
That's. That's too wide.
Well, let's stop it right here, we're. Stop, stop right here, now. This is what, uh, I think Carl was wanting to show this about White Hats and, and owning the field. You have two coaches that, yes, there's a player down and if they were, if they were dealing with the player. No problem with them being on the field, but they're not, they're already engaged with the officials and they're all the way out to the hashes. Do we have a problem here?
Yep.
Yes.
I just say it based on what they're saying.
No.
You could see, you could see the hand gestures going back and forth and, you know, you know.
Go ahead, David Langley, I heard, I heard you chime in, go ahead, David.
Can you, can you go back, I was, sorry, I was trying to follow up on the penalty enforcement on that free kick. Cause I don't think we got it. Correct. So I was trying to find the rule for it.
Okay, go. You talking about the illegal kicking or which one?
Yes.
You don't think it'd been from the spot of the illegal kick, ten yards?
No. No, because it's, it's on a free kick play, so it's a special. Uh, penalty enforcement, it's not a standard like during a scrimmage down.
So you're gonna treat that as an illegal touching then, or what?
First touching?
No, it's not first touching, that's what I was trying to find, so the rule says for the exception for fouls by K. During a kick. The, it's, it's, the option is either previous spot.
Correct.
Right, cause it's a loose ball play, right, we're not a running play. It's a loose ball play or at the option of the offended team, they could have it assessed from the succeeding spot. Which means where they would be next to put the ball in play.
The end.
I, so, sorry to detract, to detract us from this play.
They would have an option to re-kick.
Right, and I think, and I think what we did is we tacked, they wanted it tacked on to the end of the run.
That, that would be correct, so we're.
Behind where the illegal kick occurred.
I thought.
So if they're gonna attack it off.
Dave, what pages, what pages are you on?
On, get, get me back, so I'm looking under different, two different rules.
Oh, okay.
That, that's why I said it was close, I think they have that option, I know they have the option to re-kick and they have the option to take the foul at the spot. And I'm starting to agree with you, I think they could tack ten onto that succeeding spot. Just like we would allow them with a kick out of bounds. We would say you could take that or this spot starts from here.
Well, let's get it, let's get the page number and the reference.
So I'm on the electronic one. Uh, I'm at rule ten, five. Uh, one, special enforcement rules. Uh, J. So that, that just tells you that it's a special enforcement, so that's where I started, and then I went to rule ten, four, two. Which is, uh, basic spot enforcements. And that is.
Okay, it's under, uh. Maybe article two, A. On, it's our free kick.
No, it's, uh. It's C, or the exception under C. The basic spot may at the option of the offended team be the succeeding spot. For fouls by K during a legal free or scrimmage kickdown. Other than kick catch interference prior to the end of the kick, when K will not be next to put the ball in play. I was trying to find a casebook play for it, but there isn't one. So that's why I didn't bring it up, but I was.
That must have been a test question last year because I have that highlighted.
What I'll do is, uh, I'll look, I'll look and see if the, if the next play will reveal anything as far as, uh, how we actually enforced it, I thought we tacked it on to the end of the run, but I, I've slept since then. So I'll have.
That would, that would have been the correct, uh, my understanding of the rule. That would have been the correct enforcement, cause that would have been the succeeding spot.
So to tack it on at the end of the run?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I, I guess the better answer is, you guys, they would have all three options.
Options, yes.
That's, the, the best answer is replay the down at ten yards from the point of the foul, your ball, ten yards from the end of the run, your ball.
Correct.
They have all of those options, so I. Yeah, that's all. Good, good.
So, yes. It'd be ten yards previous spot, cause it was a loose ball play.
Yeah. And re-kick, yeah, ten yards and re-kick.
Yeah.
I don't think they would take.
But, no, they shouldn't do that.
They would have it. It would be stupid, but they would.
So, again, as White Hats, would you? Wanna be a little more engaged here? It, it just seems like, uh, I don't know. And I think you may, raised a good point, Brad, about. They're not on the field necessarily tending to the injured player, but on the field arguing.
Well, and again, we have four officials having a little party right here, we could be spread out and controlling the sidelines and those coaches.
So, yes, I have, now, I don't know what they're saying, so. What they're saying is a factor for me.
Yeah, they may be reporting fouls.
Well, well, uh, I'm talking about the coaches, cause that was where we left off. Uh, if the coach is asking a question like, where's the ball gonna be? Yeah, you know, that's one thing, but it looks like to me, the coach is chewing that official's butt. That for me is an issue, you're, you're allowed to come out to tend to your player, but we're not going to be arguing and getting berated during the injury timeout. Uh, by a coach.
And so. And to boot, they flagged something. But, how often does that happen, you flag something and you still get yelled at sometimes?
But.
Nothing good is gonna come from both those coaches being out there, we need to take them to back to the sideline.
Correct, back to their, their office.
But as referees, though, and I work soccer and basketball, and in soccer, this crap happens all the time, they come out and the guys pretend hurt and they wanna chew you, what we do as referees is we get out of there. These guys stood around like there was a, a, a local meeting, and that's my thing, we have to be as officials to go, coach, tend to your player, let's go, gents, let's go over, let's, let's, let's go over here, let's, because then you hook them. Right, they get hooked, they're gonna say something stupid, we flag it and there we are.
Yep.
That's a good point, Kevin, just pull, it's good to, to, as a crew leader, to pull your crew away from that situation. Be the strong person in there and say, coach, tend to your player, we will, we can talk afterwards if you wanna talk, and, and if you, if you had a problem with the coach during the game, you can say, coach, you can use one of your timeouts and I'll be happy to come over and talk to you.
We also on that play there, if you notice, we left an official out there with the coach alone. I personally don't like that. You know, we, we turned around as a group and then we, and then there was one official with the coach over there, there should have been two, you know. Sometimes I'll turn around and go over there, it's okay, coach, come on, let's go to the sideline, and I just start walking to the sidelines, and if he's gonna turn around and wanna keep talking, he's gonna have to be coming with me. Can't stay out there in the middle of the field.
Yeah, that's a good, good point, cause I wanted to bring up the same thing, is we need to have a witness to what's said, is if something goes down. Uh, then it becomes a he said, he said situation, we wanna have someone else there, so as the referee or the, a non-calling official, we have no emotional connection to that play. So our emotions are a lot more, uh, controlled and, and mild, so we can help the official who's getting chewed out. Um, by taking that time, like you said, walking back to the sideline, we don't have to say anything, we just stand there and be. An observer of the conversation, and then as they are talking, we just make sure the situation stays under control and professional. And if anything said. Then we're there to help out our fellow official, uh, and be a witness to the conversation.
Good point.
That's why in my pregame, I asked my umpire to see me talking with a coach, come join me.
Or anybody, anybody on the crew can help him.
It's nice having the big guy. Kinda nice having the big guy.
Round crew.
So this is the last clip, um, uh, this, this was also being, uh, telecast on TV, um, we all saw this play last year. It's a vicious targeting play leading to a disqualification. And the, the clip cuts off about the interaction between the coaches and the players, I'm gonna see if I can pull up the, the little news clip that shows that interaction again. I have a basic question if we can, if, if that'll play, so let's just watch this vicious hit. We all saw this.
We had two flags, we had one by the, uh, line, uh, line judge, one by the back judge there, and I saw it as an umpire, but I didn't throw up the third flag, I didn't need a me too.
So, let me see if I can. Uh, let's see, huh.
Are you looking for the coach chewing out the referee on the?
Yeah, and if I, if I can, I know, I know that Steve can speak to it, um.
Yeah.
Let me see if I can.
So who are you guys getting chewed out by the ref, or the coach?
The coach of La Quava, the La Quava coach came out onto the field and chewed out the referee and one of the, either the back judge or the wing, I can't remember, but there were two of them there and they were very calm, very professional, however. Uh, what Murph talked to us about on that is he didn't want that to happen on the field, he wanted us to walk it to the side, back to the guy's office. Otherwise, it was fine, it was handled very well with that exception. Don't let it happen on the middle, out in the middle of the field.
Can you see my screen?
We see that.
I just.
Yeah, the huddle.
You have to, you have to stop sharing and then, uh, reshare.
Stop sharing, okay.
You're in one, yeah, now, now go back to sharing again with the correct screen.
Oh, you're awesome. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so here's, here's, here's the newscast, and you probably can't hear it, right, you can't hear him talking?
Not clearly.
Okay, I'll. So he said, oh, vicious hit, that should be targeting, and you know, in college, they would throw them out.
He was ejected.
A lot of emotion on the, on the blue side, a lot of emotion because their players just got hit with an illegal hit. Tempers are running high, it's a, it's a huge game.
Violence of the collision, I'm trying to narrate a little bit, I can hear the guy talking.
We came together right away on that, all three of us had targeting, we all three had ejection. And then it was reported to the referee.
Oh, man, he just flung his whole body at him.
That's the worst targeting I've ever seen.
Yeah. Good job on the ejection. That's easy.
And then if you see, you'll see the coach sharing a little bit, I think.
So he would, did he come across the field?
Yes, he came, probably up to the numbers. Maybe further, I can't remember, it was pretty far out there, though, it's the La Quava coach, he'll, it should come along here in a second.
Yeah, yeah, man. Probably familiar with him, he's the only three I've ever had in football. Cause he's a jerk.
And the referee and the other, uh, official here, you'll see the two of them together, they were very calm when he was yelling, it was just great, nice posture, no emotions, it's just that. We need to walk him to, back to the sideline and not let him stand in the middle field, cause here we are on, on television, you know. He's telling back away, that's good. Oh, that was awful nice of the camera, gotta come off our signal. There's your ejection. Okay, let's see how far he goes before Coach gets to him here. Here comes Coach coming out to the hash marks. He gets joined right away by another, I think that might be the back judge, see that, that was very good.
Here comes, here comes the L.
But here we go, watch, watch the screaming and carrying on and how calm.
The announcers are saying, I don't know if he's seeing the same thing we're seeing.
So why, why didn't the crew flag him, I'm just asking?
Didn't he apologize later on to, to him saying that was?
I know he's hot and it's a bad time and his kid, I get it, but.
That, that referee's a school teacher and he was letting him vent a little bit again, you wouldn't, would you have thrown a flag if it was at the sideline? Probably not, right?
No, no.
So that's, that's. Acting the same way whether he was on the sideline or not, the only thing our feedback was, uh, from that evaluation was, take him to the sideline for that, okay?
But the problem is, the coach came out to the hash. Yeah.
It didn't feel like it lasted very long, it was kind of. Okay.
Yeah. It's, that's, that's that coach too.
Uh, again, I'm just, I'm concerned, I get when coaches, I, I can't, I guess my guideline is sort of the numbers, like I get it, there, there's a few steps, I'm emotional, but he comes clear to the hash. And I just think it's a discussion point, and maybe he was just honestly questioning and being a pretty good citizen, he just animated, okay, great, we walk.
Oh no, he was hot.
I know, but let's say he was, I'm giving him benefit of the doubt, we walk him back, I sort of, I sort of get it if we're like, if we catch him at the numbers, but when he gets out to the hash, I think. We have to say, we have, I just think we, as all officials, we have to say, okay, let's think about, is this good for this game, is this good for this, what are we saying, what message, you know, it's just to talk about, I'm not saying this, this crew did anything bad, because they clearly did the, the thing they had to do, which was adjust that kid.
Go ahead, Leonard, let, let Leonard speak.
So, yeah, with the coach coming out to the hash marks, I mean, it's a bad look. And. And doesn't look good on the crew and it doesn't look like you're in control of that game. So, yeah, I'm gonna flag him. Um, and you know, even a sideline warning, you know, sideline warning gets him back on his sideline because you use the tools on your belt. There's that, that, so that's a bad look when you get a head coach, an assistant coach out to the hash mark.
I love that. A sideline Said it earlier, if you just keep walking past him, the mistake occurred when he stopped. So had the referee kept walking past him to his sideline, then this wouldn't have occurred. That's the only difference I have here. I think that would have been great. Had he walked right past him and said, coach, let's go to your office.
Carl, can you go back to where, uh, the referee is walking towards the sideline? Because I, um, this just goes on to what Steve was already saying. Uh, he stops, the referee stops walking. So the coach has no other option at that point to continue walking to the referee because they wanna talk to each other and the referee stopped walking. Right?
And stop, both of them stopped together. Let's see. He's walking there.
So it looks like
They both stopped.
Yeah, he's walking with the intent to talk to, of talking to the coaches, it looks like.
They, they both stopped. They just should have done it on the sideline.
Just, yeah, I don't, yeah, just walk past him, coach, let's go to your office and we can talk about this play.
But I love what Leonard said, you guys, that in a, in our tool belt is a sideline warning for this. Because think about the other team too. And that's a, it's just a management thing. And I think we just gotta think about all of our tools, walking him back, sideline warning, flag. We have, we have lots of tools here.
Yeah, it's a game, what I think you're saying is a game management.
It is. Yeah. And I, it's a really illustrative play. I think it's a great play to, for all of us as a crew to think about these, both of these last two plays about
So just to get some background on this, you guys, uh, Las Lunas was, hadn't won, lost a game in almost two years. They were state champions the year before and there were players on that team that had never lost a game. They were so charged. It was really an intense play. It was, everyone was really juiced for this thing and they were getting their butts handed to them. You know, so by LaCueva.
That's the message. What, what are we doing? It's that dead ball officiating again. And when we know the temperature is high and we now have a big play, wh- what are you officiating? That, I mean, I need to ask myself that question.
Yeah, everyone actually on the crew stayed really calm. If you look at the posture
Oh, they did great.
I, I, like I said, the only thing I would, you could use the flag there, but if you had taken to the sideline, the flag would have never had to come out. Yeah, I gotta run, guys. My battery's about dead. Thanks, everybody. Great conversations. I'm gonna, uh, take back control, I think, I'm his host. If, if we're done, I think your guy, it was your last video, right, Carl?
Yeah, we're done.
Okay, um, I'm gonna stop recording at this time.